Madam Clerk, if you would take role call.
Thank you. Mr. Luther?
Here.
Ms. Nelson?
Here.
Ms. Reclu? Ms. Seibacher?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Present.
Mr. Washington?
Present.
Mr. West? Mr. Combs?
Present.
Eight council members present. Thank you.
All right, at this time Pastor Williams is here to do our indication. If you all will join us.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're going to begin this session tonight just a little different. Usually it's violence across America and it's police officers in some big metro community that we pray for and remember and honor. Tonight, these are our neighbors, literally within forty minutes of us. We pray tonight for the Herman Police Department, for Gaskinade County Sheriff, for all of the Gaskinade, Rosebud, and Herman community, and for the widow and the child of Detective Sergeant Griffith, who gave his life in the line of duty less than forty-eight hours ago. We also lift up Patrolman Sullentruff, who's in serious but stable condition in St. Louis. We pray for his family too, and for his care, day by day. We realize, Lord, that we live in an imperfect world. Bad things happen to very good people. And one of the greater privileges we have is to lift up those we love, and especially the Blue Line, who makes it possible for us to live in relative peace and safety and sleep quite well at night. We pray for our neighbors in California who are battling the floods, those in Texas, Oklahoma, and Georgia who are still recovering from the recent storms, and those in the blizzard from Minnesota east to New England. Please help folks that are in harm's way and those facing danger even as we're comfortable here in this chamber. I'm grateful for our mayor, administrators, our council persons, board members and committee servants, and all who serve this city at every level. I'm grateful for their commitment to our lives as citizens of this community, and I'm thankful, Lord, always, for their call to public service. I pray for this session tonight. Any discussions that are held always, we pray, will be in decisions made pleasing to you. I'm always thankful for the public that comes to participate in government. If there be anyone here tonight from the community, thank you, Lord, for their participation. We pray for anyone bereaved, anyone sick or afflicted, or anyone who just needs a touch among our city families, that you give them both grace, health, and peace. We pray all this and gree upon it together through Christ our Lord. Amen. Face the flag. Attention, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Privilege, sir.
All righty, at this time we have a representative from our local Fulton Rotary Club. They do so much for our community. It's a true honor to present a proclamation to them. So at this time, I'll walk down and present that. How are you doing, fine, Ms. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
That's me.
Appreciate your service. Whereas in 1923, the city of Fulton was nearing its 100th birthday, concerned with matters including providing utility service to its residents, public health, accommodating established industry, and economic development. And whereas the matters of interest to the city were of interest to twenty-two men who determined that they could serve the same community by establishing the Rotary Club of Fulton, Missouri. And whereas those men included people already active in the community by their efforts involving those matters. And whereas members of the Rotary Club have for 100 years enriched the Fulton community with their leadership and service. Whereas the Rotary Club of Fulton, Missouri celebrates its 100th anniversary of its founding on March 15, 2023. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the council of the city of Fulton, extend 100th birthday greetings to the Rotary Club of Fulton, Missouri, and express our hope for the continued interplay of the city and the club as it begins its second 100 years with the motto "Service Above Self" this fourteenth day of March 2023.
Congratulations. A lot of fine folks have served that over the many years here in Fulton, so we appreciate their service. Next up, we have comments from visitors. Anyone wishing to speak to the council, please step to the podium. Keep your comments to five minutes or less. And I don't see anyone coming forward, so we'll move right along. We do not have consent agenda items tonight. Unfinished business or new business, so we are going to move right along to council concerns. Council members may discuss matters or concerns, not on the agenda. Council liaisons to city boards and commissions will also provide a brief review of the most recent meeting. We'll start with Councilman West.
Okay. Planning is only has not met. Their next meeting is next Wednesday on the 22nd at 5:15 here in these chambers. I have no concerns at this time.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Seibacher?
None and none.
All righty, Councilwoman Reclu?
Yes, we did not, the, come on there. Traffic Commission has not had a meeting in the last few weeks. But there is one concern I have. Over the lake behind the Harris Center over there, there's a walkway, the concrete that goes down to the lake. Then there's a concrete pad thing with, okay. That's down into the, the concrete's going down into the lake. Is that safe? Is that, I'm concerned about that. There we go. Thank you.
Are you talking about the area that has the railing around the concrete? Yeah, that's, over the years, it's kind of starting to slide off into the lake.
Yes.
Sometimes when the lake's down, it's not so bad, but then the water rises up and it makes it worse. So I think probably what we're going to look at doing in the spring is just taking the whole thing out and probably putting something new in there.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's been a problem, and we have a little bit of a problem with the one over at Veterans Lake, too. We're starting to slide off into the lake. We plan to take care of it.
Thank you. And that's all, nothing?
All right. Thank you. Councilman Stone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Historic Preservation Commission meets in the executive conference room here at City Hall next Tuesday at 1:00 PM. I welcome anyone to join us at that meeting. It's open to the public and open to all members. So please come if you're able to and interested. And then, not necessarily, just the ongoing concern about the retaining wall at Second Street and Ravine. I know a lot of work is still going on with it. From the outside looking in, it seems to have stalled, and so I'm just curious on the timeline for that. Only if information's available. Thank you, Ms. Tyler, please.
So I know it appears it has stalled, but it hasn't. We actually have been trying to get in touch with the owner to get permission to work on the wall. I believe Kyle finally connected with her last week. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, you should see some activity.
Wonderful, thank you. I've had other constituents asking me about it. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All righty, thank you. Councilman Luther?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There has been no airport advisory board meetings since our last council meeting. With the proclamation of the Rotary Club, you did mention the celebration on the 15th. I was curious if you or our guests would like to maybe explain that a little more for possibly the people that are watching.
Put him on the spot.
There you go. So tomorrow evening, starting at 5 o'clock, we are having our 100-year centennial celebration at the Playhouse District, or Brick District Playhouse. It is open to the public, and we currently have about seventy-five members that are there. We will have a video representing the 100 years that the Rotary Club has spent here in Fulton and everything that we have done for the community in regards to our motto "Service Above Self." Tomorrow evening at the Playhouse District, Playhouse.
Excellent. Is there a theme involved as well?
So it is a Great Gatsby 1923's theme, so you'll come dressed for the air.
Do you have to have tickets?
No, we will go ahead and allow visitors at the door. We have just tried to, you'll get the community involved ahead of time so that we could prepare for the food, but we will allow individuals at the door.
And then just one other announcement to go along with that. April 28th is the YMCA Annual Banquet. So anyone in the community that feels like to get involved, please let me know or reach out to the YMCA as well. Thank you.
Very good, appreciate that. All right, next up, Councilman Combs?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Human Rights Commission has not met since our last gathering. The one thing that kind of ties into that, we are looking for vendors for our Juneteenth celebration. I know it's been pretty limited in receiving the applications for that right now. We can get those to people as they like. I know several members are looking for handing those out and trying to get more vendors to come. But outside that, I don't have any concerns tonight.
All right, Councilman Washington?
No concerns tonight.
And Councilwoman Nelson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Utility Board did have a meeting this past week, and when was that meeting? Monday? Oh, Friday. Friday, Friday. It was Friday. And they are in favor of Resolution Number 3481. They would like to see us pass that. And then, and I will go into more detail once we get to Resolution 3481, if that's okay with everyone. And then Ordinance Number 1382 was passed on March 10 of 2015, and there were four rate increases over four different years, but 2018 was never instated. And so the Utility Board is recommending that we go ahead and move forward with that. I don't believe that it's going to take any sort of action because it was already passed, but they did recommend going ahead and implementing that increase. And that is for sewer. And I have a copy if anybody would like to see that ordinance. Also, one other thing. Renee and Daryl will be in Springfield, Illinois on March 28th for the IMG A Annual Meeting. And if anybody would like to attend, please get with Renee. I will not be able to attend that unfortunately. Tyler is also out of town, so if anybody else can, that would be great. So just get with Renee on that. And I don't have any concerns.
Very good, thank you. And seeing how that ordinance goes so far back, when we do the rate increase on our sewer, should there be some type of release to the citizens so they don't see that on their bill and wonder why?
I would appreciate some conversation because I thought we had actually voted an additional increase since 2018 on sewer. I might be wrong, but I thought it was right around that time when we had another one.
I believe that the last rate increase was 2017. And when that was instated, it was over the series of four consecutive years, but for some reason in 2018, we had opted not to do that increase. And so this is just the increase that had already been approved. And like I said, I'm happy to share that. Maybe we should make that public, that ordinance, so that everybody can see it too. And Daryl calculated it, I believe it was around seven percent of what people would see. And he asked me what my sewer was, and I couldn't tell him. So, but it's not going to be a huge significant charge.
Mr. Mayor, I think at the time, we decided not to do it because we didn't need to. And if there's a need now, I guess we could go ahead with that. I don't know. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we didn't instate it when it was supposed to be, if it'd be legal to instate it now. That'd be the only question I'd have.
And how we would arrive at an effective date as well?
Yeah.
Maybe we should, maybe we must just begin again.
I don't know. We probably should look into it.
Let's put that as a topic of discussion for our next meeting. Let's do a little more digging on it, it sounds like.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Absolutely. Like I said, during the investigation, we had noticed that it hadn't been increased and with costs rising, and since it had already been approved by ordinance, that's why it was recommended.
I just don't remember, I think maybe we thought we needed, and then we decided not to. Or maybe Mary, Mary or Jeff might remember.
Yeah, I do not have that information on why it wasn't actually put in place.
It might have been another council meeting later on or something.
There were four that were approved, and we only did three. Do you know what those three were?
It's the same percentage, I believe, across the border. The rate increase was the exact same each year.
Okay.
I think if I'm remembering correctly, it was put in place when we did the last sewer treatment plant upgrade. And on the last one, we didn't felt that we needed to make payments is why it was held off. And now we're seeing a shortage, and we're needing to do some capital improvements. I mean, we got quite a few things. On a $40 bill, it raises about three bucks is what it comes out to. But that is, you are remembering correctly, it was put in there. And then we didn't implement the last, the last one because we was meeting the bond payments.
I'll actually go ahead and email that to everybody right now.
It impacts the budget about an increase of about $200,000. That's about what it does.
Whether it carries weight at this time or not, I'd like to see it come back as a new request to the council. Because I think it deserves more conversation and maybe an opportunity. We saw, we saw the opportunity with the rate increases that we've already approved, where if we had placed the rate increase on the base, then people can get some assistance with their utilities versus the utilization percentages, that sort of thing. I'd like to see some of that opportunity, if we could.
Very good. Yeah, we can bring that back in a new ordinance form, I believe. All righty. I do not have concerns tonight. I would state, though, that prior to tonight's open meeting, we had a work session that was, the topic was brought up by myself about elected official pay compensation. And we had a very good discussion. The council and the mayor have neither one had a raise since 2011. And, you know, it's clear that we don't do this for the money, but yet we do spend a lot of time and effort. And we carry a lot of responsibility, so it's worth talking about, and we did have a good conversation. And there may be some more coming back to the council on that topic. But I want it to be noted that it was not instigated by anybody other than myself, so. And I will not reap any benefits from it, so. And I think Renee has a topic too tonight for a council concern.
We're so informative. The mayor had asked that I give the council a very brief update on the legislative fly-in that we, Daryl and I did last week. We were in Washington, DC, and we were part of the American Public Utility Alliance. And the five federal policy priorities were managing the energy transition, which, EPA regulations that affect our baseloads and solid fuel electric generators and such. The second one was promoting telecommunications access. Basically, our stance is that we support pole attachments and such. However, the utilities are asking that the decision-making is including the utility and not just local oversight. The next one was utility parity and tax policy. And I do believe, and Daryl, you come up, please, if I'm misspeaking, I believe this actually affects Fulton. We're asking that Congress reinstate advanced bond refunding for municipalities in favorable interest rate environments. We are not taxed, we don't pay taxes. So we do not get a lot of tax breaks, or any tax breaks, that private utility companies get. So this is something that would assist utilities that are managed by municipalities. The next thing is maintaining security vigilance. This is cybersecurity. And this basically is just talking about the importance of having cybersecurity accessibility, especially for us in municipalities. This is expensive, and it's never-ending. And as you all know, many utilities across the country have had their database hacked and held ransom. So cybersecurity is something that we, as a city, we definitely stand with, MPUA with this. The last thing was encouraging economic process, I'm sorry, progress. And this is for local economic development and asking Congress to continue to fully fund LaHeep to assist economically disadvantaged customers. So those were the five topics that we discussed. We had opportunities one-on-one. We had meetings with Congressman Lookdemeier. We also met with Senator Hawley's office, with some of his very key staffers. And then as a group, we met with every representative, every federal representative or one of their staff, senior staffers to discuss Missouri and how these things impact us. The last thing I wanted to say, as Lauren had mentioned, the upcoming conference, but we do hope that next year, members of council will consider attending this fly-in. What we found was that while we received full ears, those who were elected officials, they were, it was noted, and the respect level went up. So people, especially elected officials, respect the presence of other elected officials. And it does make a difference because as we continue to sit in front of these people, they learn who we are and they become more responsive. So you all are definitely encouraged, and we will make sure that you know anything that's coming up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have an alibi, if I may. I forgot, a huge thank you. It was announced yesterday that the Jefferson City Medical Group is bringing an express care clinic to Fulton. There was a lot of work done by our county commissioners. They're going to be able to use some ARPA funds to renovate the space and to assist with that so that they can provide full radiology services and clinic services. And a lot of work done by the chamber to bring that to fruition. It was a lot of months coming and a lot of people working to do that. And that's going to be huge for this community to offer some express care. And I'm sorry I missed that thank you earlier, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and that's, yeah, urgent care. But yeah, definitely in the city of Fulton, we had representatives on that ARPA board as well that worked on that, too. So there was a lot of effort by a lot of people that went into that, so. Good way to use that money, yep. So.
That located Jeff?
It'll be near the, right next to the License Bureau, so, out here on that, yep. Yeah, where the old, yeah, the old urgent care was. So, yep, and they should be up and going, I think, pretty soon. They were going to put out a request for staffing right away, I think, so, yep. All right.
The unfortunate part is it's not, it's not a 24-hour operation, so.
No.
Like we had with the hospital, we don't have the emergency room, that sort of thing. But it's definitely a step in the right direction.
Yep, yep. All righty, we'll move right into resolutions. Councilman Washington, if you'd present 3479 for us.
Resolution, Resolution 3479. Resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton to enter into an agreement with the Callaway County Ambulance District of the city of Fulton, Missouri for provisions of reciprocal facilities use in the event of a disaster where one party facility is unusable. I make a motion that Resolution 3479 be placed for final passage on tonight.
I can interrupt. Councilman Washington, we just, it doesn't go to final passage. It's for approval. We make a motion to.
Make a motion for passage, yes.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I correct myself. Thank you.
Yeah, cool. And this is just like an MOU, pretty much, with our ambulance. I see Chief getting ready to come up here.
Mr. Mayor, while the chief's coming up, I will note that myself and Councilwoman Nelson both serve on the Callaway County Ambulance Board, and we fully support this MOU and everything that goes with it, but we will both abstain from voting on this just for full transparency, while it has no financial impact whatsoever on either entity, just for the opportunity of transparency.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
And it's not necessary tonight, so that's great. Thank you. Go ahead, Chief.
Good evening. Kevin Kofelt, Fire Chief, City Fulton. So I went and met with Director Anderson. We've talked about it before, but we wanted, we both wanted to get some agreement in writing. If a disaster struck and one of our stations are down, we would house the other agency, and we'd run out of their station. So it was a mutual agreement, and we both just felt like it was time to get an agreement in writing.
Couldn't agree more. That's shake hands and, you know, word of mouth is great, but having that in writing, that, hey, we're going to help when the need arises is great to have, so, appreciate that.
And we've always had a good relationship with Callaway Ambulance.
Yeah. All righty, any discussion on that? I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no?
Thank you.
All right, we'll move that along. Thanks. Next up, Councilman West, if you'd present Resolution 3480.
With great pleasure. Okay, Resolution Number 3480. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to enter an agreement with the local 2945 International Association of Firefighters and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3480 at this council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. A lot of work went into this. Very proud of it. Our firefighters are here, representatives from the union shaking their heads that, yeah, they're excited about it, too. And I would turn it over to Renee if you want to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what I would like to do is just briefly go through the articles that had significant, I don't know if change is the right word, but change. Starting with Article 2, Recognition in Section 1. The offices of lieutenant and captain were added as a recognition of rank. The next change is Article 7, Work Cycle and Pay Periods. An amendment was inserted stating that employees will work a 24-hour on, 48-hour off schedule within assigned Kelly Day. Next is Article 8, Compensation and Payroll. Pay ranges were updated to reflect the current minimum along with the compensation for certifications. Certifications were initially proposed as percentages, however, now they are monetary increases as indicated in the contract. Language was also included to illustrate the expectations and requirements for advancement within the fire department. Last, overtime and call-outs are the responsibility of the union executive board and not the director of administration. The next article is Article 11, Working Out of Classification. We added language that states working out of classification addresses step-up pay and the employee that is acting within the supervisory capacity during that period. Next is Article 12, which discusses. Next is Article 12, which discusses minimum staffing. Minimum staffing will be four people per shift. Council has approved fire submission of a SAFER grant that will allow us to hire additional staff to maintain this shift staffing and to continue to service the needs of Fulton and Callaway County. The next article is Article 13, open positions and transfers. Qualifications and eligibility for promotions and transfers were better defined. Next is Article 17, living and working conditions. This article covers membership to Legends, the ability to work a second job, and the distance that firefighters can live outside of the city limits of Fulton, which is 45 miles. Prior to this, it was minutes. It was unanimously agreed to change this to miles. Next is leave time, which is covered in Article 18. The changes to this section mirror the updated handbook. PTO is now vacation time, ESL is sick time, and we discuss trade time. Next is Article 19, holidays. The definition of holiday is not only referenced in the employee handbook, but there is also an expanded explanation that fully addresses work hours, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and the impact on off-duty employees. Next is Article 20, benefits. Shift leave is addressed. Shift availability for someone that is out is also defined. Language that was assumed but not incorporated has been incorporated. This includes 457B, that is the city match for pension, and a biannual meeting between the city and the fire union. Section 2 adds the critical illness benefit that council approved through the implementation of the MRMA critical illness benefit. This was done last year. Next is Article 25, miscellaneous provisions. In Section 9, the city agrees that this local shall be allowed to have their union meetings at a fire station of this city, and that on-duty members will be allowed to attend so long as it does not interfere with an emergency situation. Section 10 states that the union president or designated union officer shall be permitted to attend the city council meetings or other public meetings while on duty during scheduled work hours, provided such absence does not affect the effectiveness and efficiency of the fire department operation as determined by the fire chief or designee. The last article is 26, and it is the duration of this agreement. During this initial two-year period, no later than 180 days prior to contract end, either party can give notice to the other that it intends to reopen the contract for negotiation. Any such notice does not oblige the terms of the agreement. If the document is not reopened within 180 days of contract end, it will continue year to year without change. Changes must be mutually agreed upon or to be made at any time. So, that is the synopsis of the changes in the contract. Gentlemen, would you like to come up? Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Joey Murth, President of the Local 2945. I just want to know if you guys have any specific questions about any of these articles at all that I can address or answer. Easy enough. I just wanted to say thank you. We've been meeting for quite a while. Towards the end, we got pretty frequent, but this was probably one of the best processes we've been through, and I think you guys are well aware. We're thankful for that. So, thanks, guys.
I just have...
Glad to hear that.
Joe, answer what question? Yeah. So, did the, did the membership vote on this already, or they...
Yeah, this has been ratified on our side.
Okay, it's been ratified, so this is just...
Yep, yep. So, it's in your guys' hands.
All right. Great. Thank you. I do have another question, but probably for Ms. Renee. So, in Article 8, where you're talking about compensation and all the certification, I love, love this. So, it encourages getting these certifications, right? So, for an example, Driver Care Corps will receive a 90 cent pay increase. That's per hour, correct? Those are all rates?
That is correct.
Per hour, okay. And all, that applies to all these. That's, I just, I thought that's what it meant, but I want to be clear that that's what it meant. So, thank you.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, a question. What is our, what's the current minimum staffing or prior to...
Four, four men, minimum. With the SAFERS grant, we're trying to raise that to six, so we can have three on each truck.
But it's not changing...
Nothing's changing as of yet until we get the SAFERS grant. If we're lucky enough to get that grant, we'll add, we'll change it.
Thank you, Chief. I, I was afraid we raised our minimum prior to receiving the grant and the additional people, which, if we don't get the grant, would place us at a burden. Okay? Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Stone.
Thank you. Also, so with respect to that, the other good thing is that, once we receive the grant, the union has already indicated it will be a simple amendment. We frankly don't, we foresee this going into effect, fingers crossed, 2024. So, again, we're just trying to prepare for the, the fire department has been responding, as you all know, a lot more, a lot of the counties. So, we want to make sure that we are prepared, not only for that, but also to, to handle whatever internal needs that our fire staff has. So, we're trying to be proactive with this. Well, I think we were very proactive with this, so thank you.
I look forward to us being able to raise our staffing. It just always concerns me if we, if we change our language in the, in the agreement, then it places us at that requirement.
Right. And that's why we didn't do it yet.
Well, even one, even once we get it, I'm, I want us to be very, very cautious about changing any language immediately, even once we get the, the additional staff. We can have as many staff as we want, it's just what we put in writing. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Any other questions on this?
When does it go into effect?
With exception of the staffing aspect and certain things, for the most part, doesn't, this goes into effect once it's passed, but then there are certain aspects, there are certain things that are already in effect that we just, it wasn't in here. So, it's mirroring. It's certain things that you all passed already, so we needed to make sure that that was covered in their contract.
So, I believe my understanding would be that the contract would go into effect, but the items that would not go into effect would be the certification pay, because that would need to go through the budget process in January 2024. So, I think that's the way it's set up, so we put that language under those specific items to make sure that it was clear what's going to start as soon as this is passed by the council and we all sign, and what's going to start in that 2024 budget year.
Thanks for making note of that. We're all, Renee's holding everyone to a pretty tight standard on that budget, and I appreciate that very much. So, y'all should be no different. All right. Any other concerns, questions? I'll call for that question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? All righty.
Mr. Mayor, just a moment.
Yes, sir.
When would we know about...
Yeah. When would we know when the grant is being approved and we have received it?
We should know by September of this year.
Okay.
All right. Next up, Councilwoman Seabock, if you'd present 3481 for us.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 3481, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Viking Painting LLC for services relating to the rehabilitation and repainting of the pedestal water tower and ground storage tank located in the southern half of Fulton, South Business 54 and Collier Lane, Project COF 22-04, at an estimated cost of $1,159,450. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 3481 at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion in a second. Kyle's not here tonight. I see Darryl coming up. Big project here.
Yeah, we got three bids on this. And actually, that, those tanks have a little bit of structural problems that need fixed. It's not just painting. And when we got ahold of Burns &amp; McDonald about a year ago to help us, Burns &amp; Mack gave y'all a great compliment with the engineering staff you have at the city. They didn't feel that we needed them, but the consultant that they used was a tank person or company in St. Louis, I think it was D&amp;M, if I remember correctly. So, we worked straight with them and not through Burns &amp; Mack to get the specs and everything written, because that tank's been there since 1961, if I remember correctly, and we want it to, you know, last another 60-some years. But the two pipes, the fill pipe and the, and the drain pipe inside the tall tank has got a hole in it. I think everybody knows that. And it had a hole in it before. So, this bid is to replace both of those pipes. We did cavern, there was a lot of pitting. And then, I think everybody knows there's a, there's a sales tax for water and wastewater that was passed in like '05. I think it sunsets in '25. There's enough money there to do this job, so we'd like to use that money to do this job, similar to what we did on Route 0, lift station a few years back. So, that's where we're at.
How did this final quote come in relation to what we'd budgeted for this year?
It's like everything else. We, we thought it was going to come in around $700,000.
Very specialized trade to even be able to do this job, so, you know, there's not, not 100 companies that can come in. I know Brad had asked if we, you know, put these bids out locally, and it's just kind of one of those things that not many people can do that, so...
And all three of the bids are actually attached in your packet, if you wanted to see them.
This is the tank we raised a few years ago, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. But, yeah, and so, but Jeff asked my question about the budget, so, but we have enough money in the reserves from the sales tax to pay for it?
Yes, sir.
So, we do.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other concern on this, questions? I'll call for that question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? We've been talking about this for way too long. Moving on, the ward, this is First Read, Councilwoman Clu, if you'd present 1673 for us.
Bill number 1673, Animal Control Ops. Ward, this is the name, Chapter 14, Animal Control on Animal Control in General, Section 14-4, I'm appealing, I've presented all of the sections, 14-4, Animal Control Ops, and that being section 14-4, Control and Establishment, and a motion that Bill number 1673, we place it, second reading, motion. Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second, and this is just formalizing what we think is a more proper organizational setup. Is that...
Yes, animal control was moved under police, so this is just moving it.
Are there any concerns on this? I'll call for that question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? All right. Next up, Councilman Combs, if you'd present 1674.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1674, Document Authorization for Project Design, An Ordnance Repealing Ordinance Number 1612-23, Bill 1665, and authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute all necessary documents in relation to the Missouri Department of Transportation, application for federal and state assistance for project design by Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated, CMT, regarding Airport Runway Lighting Project Number 23-04A-1, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1674 for second reading at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Very good. And this is for the engineering portion of the lighting project that we just got done talking about and approving. Is that right?
That's correct. The, basically, this started out as a 2022 project. MoDOT requires that we update the project number to reflect 2023. There are no changes, only a new number is being assigned.
Little bit of housekeeping, sort of, so, yeah. And I would just say, RC's not unique. Things like this have drug out because of supply chain issues across the board. We had, you know, lots of issues with, with everyone, so there's no blame to be placed on some of these things taking longer than we thought they were. But yet, but yet, we gotta get back on the, get back on the horse and get these things moving, so... Any concerns on this, questions? I'll call for that question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? Next up, Councilman Stone, if you would present Bill 1672 for second read.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1672, Annual Financial Disclosure Requirement, An Ordnance Reenacting Section 2-9 through 2-13 of the Fulton City Code pertaining to the annual financial disclosure requirement and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to move Bill Number 1672 for third reading at tonight's meeting.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any concern on this, questions? I'll call for that question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? And did you say you were going to read it again tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, if you would, again, please.
Bill number 1672, An Ordnance Reenacting Section 2-9 through 2-13 of the Fulton City Code pertaining to the annual financial disclosure requirement and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1672 for final passage at tonight's meeting.
Motion in a second. Any concerns? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? At this time, you've all been read the bill three times. If you would, Madam Clerk, take roll call for final vote.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Forclue?
Yes.
Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmembers affirmative.
All righty. Lastly, announcements, we have our next city council meeting here at Tuesday, March 28th at 7:00 p.m. Election Day coming up, Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. Polls open at 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The 22nd Annual Clean Sweep will be held Saturday, April 15th. To register for that, please get ahold of your Parks and Rec folks at 573-592-3190. And Spring Cleanup Week will take place just prior to that, April 10th through 14th, along with our regular pickup routes. And please note that no construction debris or tires will be accepted. And if you have questions, contact our Solid Waste Department. Their number is 573-592-3176. And I do have a need for executive session tonight to discuss legal action, cause of action or litigation, and also discuss personnel hiring, firing, disciplining, promotion. And I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to exit to executive session for legal and personnel reasons.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, if you would take roll call, please.
Ms. Forclue?
Yes.
Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
That's okay. And Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
And Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This should be a brief exec session, guys.